We're going to call this meeting to order. If everyone would stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. And we're calling this meeting to order. We would like to approve the meetings of the January 7 regular meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over those?
Make your motion now, please.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. Do we have any mail to be mentioned? No? Anything from our county attorney?
Not yet.
Not yet?
There might be.
Okay, reports, committee reports, any committee reports to be reported on? Commissioner, Representative, that's going to be Dale.
Del Strong?
Del Strong. They always choose you, Dale.
Any of you Dale 1 or Dale 2?
This guy here ought to fill in every now and then.
That's right. He's saying no.
Well, I'll be brief. We had a rather brief commissioner meeting today. It only lasted 30 minutes, so that was okay. We did approve 144 requests today for 911 for Kelly Van Meter. And gave the go-ahead for the Health Department to replace their service window downstairs. And heard a couple of reports. And I'd like to report to you, Bob, that our new boiler installations are complete and they're both up and running and working very well.
Thank God they didn't break down in January.
Yeah, that's a good thing. All that's done now, good, behind us. So I just wanted you to know that.
Is the jail next?
Jail's already done.
Oh, the jail's done, huh?
Yeah. Yeah, we've got one, replaced one at the jail and one here at the courthouse.
Good, okay.
So here in the courthouse, we are going to later on install a water softener system for this heating system. It ought to reduce our maintenance costs in the long run.
How much life is left in that former boiler we had with the other boiler back up now?
These guys will tell you that they should be good for anywhere from 10 to 12 years, but you never know. We've got one at the Annex over there that's been there since 1962.
Usually about 30 years on a boiler.
Of course, they don't build them like that anymore. But you never know, there's no way to know. Also, just for your information, this week I have letters of support going out to at least three Internet broadband providers that are looking at a build-out, a further build-out here in the county. Sometime next month, I expect to hear, hopefully, really good news for Fayette County as far as rural broadband service goes. The Indiana Broadband Office is winding up the bidding process for the BEAT program here in Indiana, which I expect Fayette County to be a recipient. My hope is to see the remainder of the county that is not covered, BE covered. Charter Communications has taken care of just about all the eastern part of the county. And my hope is to see us go on to the county line between us and Rush County within this foreseeable future. So they have contacted me and they want to schedule a listening session, they're calling it, that will inform everyone of what to expect. They want to do that the first week of March. So when that is set, ready to go, I'll make sure that all of you get an invite to it. I think we'll probably have it at the EDG office facility up on 21st Street. And it'll be during the week in the evening hour. So be expecting an invite from me on that. Because a lot of these rural areas, especially in the southwestern part of the county, you can't, there's a lot of places you just can't get a cellphone signal, let alone good internet service. So the people that have been in the east side of the county that have been served by Charter Communications thus far are really, really happy with this coverage. And they have good packages. So I'd like to see the same company be able to continue their build-out, but we'll see how all the bidding goes. Also, I'll have a letter of support going out for the Mary Gray Bird Sanctuary this week that is applying for grant assistance for a number of really nice improvements out there. So we'll see how that goes. Other than that, I don't think I need to bring up anymore. I know you guys got a lot to cover tonight.
But I know you get tired of it. How's the jail coming? Next question?
I haven't talked to any of those guys this week. Last week, everything's looking just almost complete. There's just a few minor details here and there to take care of. I expect us to do the, what they call the punch list walkthrough probably later this month. And hopefully, all that goes well. There's always going to be a few cleanup details. Certainly, we have some work to do on the parking lot. You've got to wait for the weather on things like that. I'm, you know, well, the sheriff and I was over there together last week. And what's your guess, Sheriff, on that project? You think?
They were telling me February, but they've been telling other people around April. So I would guess middle of April, optimistically.
2025?
It's getting close. It's really getting, it is getting close.
Yeah, there's, one of the companies that is taking care of the communication between the command center and the jail and the facility over there. I won't name their names, but you've heard of them. They're hard to communicate with. I happened to catch one of their guys over there working and asked for all the contact information for everybody in their organization so that we could do a little bit better communicating. And he took my information and said, "I'd be hearing something any day and I haven't heard anything yet." So, you know, they'll send me an invoice that says, "You owe us $100,000 for parts." Well, do better than that, will you? You know, just tell us, tell us what we're buying from you. And it's been that sort of thing with them. So, but I, little by little, it's coming along. All we can do is hope for the best, but it can't be as far now as it has been. You'll get invited to the open house.
Thank you.
Okay?
Since you're talking about the women's facility jail, Zach, do you have the employees hired?
I do. We're fully staffed as of today. It may change tomorrow, but right now, we got the staff working.
Okay, well, good seeing everybody.
Thank you, Dale. Transfers, additional reductions, additional appropriation to animal shelter donation fund 4102 to account 30301 veterinarian charges in the amount of $30,000.
What's your current fund balance, Jane?
I haven't checked it for a while. Do you know, Jane?
I don't want the document.
I saw my name, it was around 60, somewhere around there. It might be more than that now. But, yeah, that's, that helps pay for the spood, for the spade in neutering and some of the health, health problems that animals does have. You know, we take it out of donation. That way, it saves the animal a lot of money. That's where, where we try to save some, you know, for the county.
It's $90,000.
$90,000? I told you probably more than that.
Well, next time, there's a box on there that you can put it in, on that board.
Okay. Will do.
So do we need to discuss this further or make a motion to? No?
I'm moved to approve the additional appropriation.
I'll say it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, thank you. Do we need to do the 144, Jane? What's the county council? No, okay. No, I didn't, I didn't.
Oh, at the last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Okay, all right, thank you. I thought I would check before I get out of here. All right, thanks. Thanks, guys.
No problem, thank you, Dave.
I'll get with you in a couple weeks.
Um, Gabe?
It was Brad, Gabe and then Tim.
10 seconds.
Okay, 144, Sheriff, Jane?
Not technically a 144, I guess. I'm asking for permission to use my commissary account to contract with Jeff Griffin to make some changes and modifications to our Spillman system. It's our jail management system. With adding the new female facility, we have to add those locations in there. And that's beyond my scope of Spillman. So he's being contracted, he's contracted with the city of Connersville and Franklin County Sheriff's Department right now. He used to work for Spillman for 15, 20 years after he left the Sheriff's Department. I think they're paying him $25 an hour. And if I could contract with him, pay it through my commissary account, it's no cost to the taxpayers. I just can't use commissary for things like this without council's approval. So that's why I came here, to get approval to do this.
How much you think it's going to cost?
I would assume, I would like to use him for other things if it pops up, but I would assume with his expertise, I've already got some of it started. Maybe 10 hours. So it's not going to be a lot, so $250. I mean, he'll bill us and then we'll make it with the paperwork with the auditor's office and we should be good. But like I said, I can use commissary without approval for things for the inmates or training, but stuff like this, I got to get approval.
So you just want to ask for a certain amount and that would be how it number?
I'm not sure what the amount would be. So I would assume it's not going to exceed $500, but if it gets to that, I can come back and let you guys know. But we have quite a bit of money in our commissary right now, so.
So I guess we'll make a motion for that $500?
Yeah, we need to make a motion. Does someone want to make a motion?
We'll make a motion for Zach to use $500 as commissary funds.
Up to that, we don't know.
Up to, I'm fine with that.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So moved.
All right. And the women's center is coming along. I was over there. They're bolting the tables down, the beds are in, everything seems to be working, the cameras are up. Like Dale said, it's getting everybody, the Securitas is the company he's talking about. They do send bills and you call and say, "Hey, what, where can I pay this?" And they won't answer the questions, so they've been hard to deal with. Out of Indy, I think. It used to be Stanley Securities, that's who gave the old jail. And it's just tough to deal with, so.
Maybe Dale, you need to go see him in person.
He should.
Yeah.
What'd you say the name of the company was?
Stanley Security, or Securitas now. It used to be Stanley Securities, that was out of Indianapolis, I think, but I'm not sure. Securitas, I'm sure is a bigger building. I think they contract a lot, the two guys that came down to do the old jail, when they upgraded that, they were contracted through Securitas. So they couldn't give me any information to contact anybody, so.
I need, I need to talk to him on this project that we're talking about.
Yeah. I can get you the contact that I have, who usually answers emails, but he directs me to somebody else and they never answer, so I can get that. I'll email it to you.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're going to, on old business, we're going to talk about the public safety. And what we're going to discuss is what we were going to be able to give the volunteer fire departments. And originally, in our November 27, 2024, let me get the right numbers here.
Yeah, it is in October, when was the original plan?
The October, yes. It was supposed to be $562,199. What we got as of 1/15 was $482,965,000. So what that is, is there's an $80,000 difference on what we had presumed. So the board will have, we're going to discuss this evening. We still want to give to the volunteer fire departments. It just may not be the entire $50,000 that we had presumed. So I was going to make a motion, Jane and I talked, and Jane can further this conversation. She has the $35,000 instead of $50,000. So that is open for discussion if someone wants to, because I know we had pledged the $50,000, but the money did not come through.
May y'all make a comment, Sharon?
Yes.
I think in the future, not knowing how much we're going to get, if you're out there someplace, we quit making dollar amounts and go percentage-wise.
Well, the dollar amount was on there, it was what they were presuming.
I'm talking about the next budget hearing, if we don't give a dollar amount because we don't know how much we're going to get. And I'm saying to make it a percentage, 1%, 2%, 5%.
So, yeah, yeah, just for future reference.
Just for future reference?
Because we don't know what we're going to get, right? To set a dollar amount, if we don't know, that's what causes the problem.
Right, right.
So Sharon, you're proposing to give them 30 instead of 50?
No, 35.
Instead of 50?
Yes. If Jane wants to elaborate on that amount.
Well, and by the time, because you can't approve more than you budget. We only budgeted 129, so that would have been 43 between the three of them. We're $16,847 short of what we, of the 500 that we were hoping we would get. So, I mean, it was just a suggestion to, of what money's left, that you take that 16, 847 shortfall and divide that three ways and then reduce from the 43 that we had already approved. 16, 847 divided by 3, reduce by 56, 15. It's what, or 56, 16, it's what you'd at least have to reduce it by. So you could go 37, 384, if you want to. And that would be, that would be spending every penny that that fund will bring in.
Why can't we just do an additional on the county general?
Because right now, we don't, we don't have that. I want to hear from the fire departments.
I'll go. My name is Zane Bedore. I've been on the Glenwood Fire Department for 10 years. I was county commissioner from 2012, 2016, so I know how this works. I get it. I understand what Bob had said, Mr. Stewart said, and I don't disagree with that. Don't make a decision until you figure out, you know, what, and I understand where it was and how it worked out.
That's common sense.
Right.
Well, common sense, I agree, but we did have dollar amounts.
Right, what you were saying was progression, but I'm just going to make a statement. But you projected what you were going to get and you did the best with the information that you had.
With the information that we need.
Statistically, volunteer departments get more structured fires than a rural city, okay? So when one fire department has a fire, we all go, okay? When you empty all three city fire stations, in the city of Connersville, and they called in all three shifts, Everton is their backup, okay? When Rushville has to empty their station, Glenwood is their backup. I don't know exactly who Bentonville's is, but they do back up Cambridge City and some other stuff. So forth. So with having said that, from what I've been told, $13,000 is being pulled from the budget for each department, projected, that's, that's what's on the table. That's a big deal for us. One firefighter that we get on our roster is anywhere between $1,000 and $1,200 to put him through school. Because you, by state law, they have to go to school. They have to take the classes and they have to take a state test, or they cannot go into a structured fire. It's a liability issue. Not including the turnout gear, that's $4,000, $5,000, $6,000. Then the air packs that are $7,000, $8,000 apiece. So I realize there's a lot of people say, "Well, you're just a bunch of rednecks with blue lights," but we're not. We, we understand, in our pancake breakfasts and our fish fries that we do, okay? That's, that's a lot of PR, okay? It's not a whole lot of money. So we live off of donations and what we can get. So from my side, all we're asking is to honor what you said. And then if next year you got to cut it, you got to cut it. But we've already planned on that. Glenwood just bought a new brush truck because the other one's going to blow up. That's expensive. So with this spring, when we're running around putting out field fires in the county, you know, that rigging costs a lot of money. The truck and then, you know, the apparatus that goes on the back of it. And I appreciate what you guys do. I'm just saying honor what you said you were going to do, and I know it stinks. If you've got it in the rainy day fund, pull it, okay? Next year, we won't be in here. You'll know the budget, you'll know what's going on. But the problem is, we depend on this money. Because we've already made provisions for things we need to buy, okay?
I get it, I'm not arguing with you.
Right, a paid department doesn't, doesn't really have to worry about it. We do, because air packs only have, what, a 10-year shelf life? What's, what did we pay for air packs the last time, anybody?
We just bought nine for $85,000.
Nine of them for $85,000. And we, and so we have to have those. If they go outdated, that's a liability issue. Somebody dies in the fire, that's going to be a problem. So we're not up here to argue at point, we appreciate what you do, but every penny that we can get, we need to get.
And that brings up my point. We're paying out $35,000 because that's what we, that's all we've got. How much does the city give you?
City doesn't give us anything.
Absolutely, they didn't give you a dime, did they?
No, they didn't.
You should be down there at City Hall raising the heck with them for $15,000 because they're getting twice as much as what we're getting.
You know what hap, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. You know what happens if your house catches on fire? The fire department shows up, which it would be Bentonville. What do you get on the insurance take on that? 150 bucks maximum, maybe 50 if you're lucky?
On the insurance on the house fire?
Yeah.
We get zero.
You get zero, okay? And maybe that's changed. So it's called community and helping each other out. That's what it's called, okay? We don't, we don't look at Connersville and say, "No, it ain't our problem." Somebody, so when they come and cover the city, okay, we could say that. We could say, "No, we're not doing it," okay? But heart attacks don't stop happening. Car crashes don't stop happening. So when Connersville is out on some big event, somebody needs to be in here to cover it. And I get that. But we don't think about it as, "Well, you owe me and we owe you and you owe this." Just when we're told a dollar amount and we go, "Okay, we're going to do it. This is what we're going to plan." And then it doesn't come through, $13,000 to us is like $50,000. That's all I got to say.
Can I, I want to make sure I'm clear on something. I know the original proposal was, was around 50.
You're figuring wrong on that, if I may. You know, I was here and all that. 45 was the final figure, per department. $5,000 you put back into the county highway fund, where we go out and clean tree, debris off the roadway during storms. So $15,000 goes each department from that budget.
Okay.
And then we were figuring out 45 for each department off the emergency service tank.
Yeah, I remember that.
We've been getting the 5.
Does that make sense, I suppose, that's what we talked about? Because you'd ask Jane if we could put the 5 per department, $15,000 back into the county highway.
That's how we cut it at the time to get it down.
Yes, yes. From 50 to 45, and then you put the 5 back in the county highway fund, you're going to increase it back to that 50 number where we all started with.
So, yeah. So it ended up being 43?
Yeah.
We could just pull it out right there.
So the only good question is, I'm kind of new to this, I'm still kind of picking this up. So is it 13 per department for a total of 39,000 that were short, or is it?
I'm just saying, if you, if you were using existing funds, the fund would only cover roughly 37. So, yes, it would be 13 short of the 50.
Per department?
That's what we were looking, per department.
So we would need a total of about 39,000, 38,000, change, whatever it is.
I'd also like to say real quick, sorry, I'll shut up, but I just sat down here and thought about it. When the Sheriff's Department has a problem and the city has to go help them out in the county, the city don't ask the county for any money. That's just them helping each other out.
It's a matter of safety to our citizens.
Correct.
You can't put a price on a life.
Right.
Period.
So.
I agree, I am not arguing.
We could pull it from rainy day fund somewhere.
We can fund it.
I guess rainy day fund was the emergency funding. Now, in my case, in emergencies, when the bathroom door's locked and I need to get in there. I guess is where you're coming from.
This is safety, Bob, you don't get any different, you, you don't.
Safety?
Safety.
I keep a fire extinguisher in my home, that's my safety.
There's another concern here, too, that we got to keep in mind. We've got Senate Bill 1 kind of hanging over our heads. And if all of our, if all of our expenses stay static over the next three, four years, and they're not going to, but let's just say for the sake of argument, those reserves will be gone by 29.
That's right.
Right.
And so, I mean, I don't know that we're in a place where we can do that, at least not right now.
How many, how many dollars do we waste, Scott? Do you have any idea?
Well, I'm all ears if you know that number.
We've been talking about it. We haven't been wishing it anyway.
When did you send it? I haven't, I, I didn't see one at 6 o'clock this morning.
No, this was us before the first of the year.
Oh, that one, okay, yeah, I did read that.
Yeah, that one.
I did read it.
There's lots of savings there. It takes a little effort, takes a little work.
And that's what we're talking about here. I mean, what, if we didn't have a safety tax, where are you going to do this? I mean, there wasn't any money at all, you're living off a 2023 budget. What are you going to do about that? I know you've got a problem. We got a problem too.
I think, I think the bigger issue is, we've already committed that money.
Absolutely.
We made a promise.
Absolutely.
And if we don't honor our.
We made a budget, not a promise.
If we don't honor our commitments, then it's kind of the same thing the state's proposing to do to us. And I don't think that's a situation anybody wants. So I think that the best case scenario for this, this year is to fund that shortfall. And we can do that through the rainy day fund or however we want to do that, I really don't care. But I think we should fund that, that shortfall.
I do, too.
I do, too.
One caveat that we're going to research, and I'm assuming that if that ends up being your vote, great. I don't want this to deter anyway and anyway. I just, I don't want to make any more false promises. We have to make sure, because this is considered a donation. We have to make sure, and I don't know the answer off the top of my head, we'll have to go to state world accounts, whether or not a donation can be given from county general. Okay, I don't know, we'll know the answer. And I know it seems, I know it sounds silly, but there's only so many things you could do that with. Like, like this, this tax, certainly, obviously, that's what it was. And, and I know it seems, I know it sounds silly, but there's only so many things you could do that with, like, like this, this tax, certain, obviously, that's what it was, it was designed for.
Right.
And maybe we have to do some kind of creative accounting. I don't know what the answer is. I just don't. A very tiny chance that would be a hiccup if we move that way.
Sure.
But just in case it is, I don't want this to be another scenario where we say we're gonna do something, we can't.
And thirty-five thousand dollars is a lot of pancakes.
I want, well, I want that to be, I just, that's a little tiny thing hanging out there. I, I say, if you were to pass that, that's passed with that idea.
And I completely understand these guys, you know, their issue. I mean, you're dealing with small budgets, small amounts of money, and, and in terms of the county, county budget, those small dollars are really big in, in those instances. So I don't think you can just say, hey, those are, that's an option after we already had that commitment. I don't think that's, that's a good way to, to treat every, any.
The, the problem I have with that is the fact, why did we commit something we didn't know what we was gonna get?
I don't know.
Because Scott here said it's gonna be less than five hundred thousand, but we had, like, we had a gold mine, and we didn't.
What the facts we had at the time.
Everything was done with the best of intention.
It was, and it was the money dollar amount that gave us.
Like I said, yeah, I wanna point out, this came from the state, not from me, so any of y'all that were blaming me, no. The Department of Local Government Finance, right here in October, estimated five sixty-two.
So, so Bob, I don't think the prob- I just wanna be, I don't think anybody made an error with the numbers. It was, and you could say, hey, we should've done percentages, but everybody was on that same board that, I mean, that.
Yeah.
She kept saying, this is my lower number estimate, we're basing it off of this. So you did it correctly, Jane.
So I mean, I, in my opinion, as the legal counsel, that was done as well as that could be. I thought the counsel, I thought everybody used the, the best numbers they could possibly use. That just happens sometimes. So I don't, I don't know that I'd be overly critical about that.
Jane, because Jane did say, this is my, what I'm receiving from them, she reiterated it over and over.
Yeah.
So it's not her fault.
I agree with everything Zane said, but, you know, my thing was, too, that, you know, we have budgets, too, and that's, that's our main thing, is we agreed this. I mean, I, I can't even believe, six, seven months after the budget meeting, I'm still standing up here, we're trying to secure our lit money. Ninety percent of the county's covered by volunteers, and them peoples paying this lit tax, too. So we were told we were gonna get a certain amount. I, I think, you know, for, I know for ourselves, you know, we had a truck go down. We had a truck go down, and we had to repair it, that was more than our whole year's budget. And we have to get it fixed. We sent it off in November. The tank, the tank bused, we have to get a tank. Without a tank, you don't have water. So that, that was an unforeseen expense. We was hoping to use this to stay up to date with these OSHA regulations, like I told you, that's still working on it. But we was in a dire need to have to get this truck fixed. It's due next month. Um, I sold equipment today to help try to do that. I have went to personally our township trustees and tried to get a early draw. So we're counting on this money to carry us through this, and we got budgets, too, and now we're getting told that, hey, maybe twenty-five, thirty percent of us not gonna be there. That, that's, that's huge to us. You know, thirteen thousand dollars to us is massive compared to maybe somebody that's got a two or three million dollar budget. But yeah, we're, we're, you know, and we try to keep a little money back to apply for grants, and as you guys know, grants are keeping us alive. You know, um, covering, you know, you guys don't have to pay our, our insurance, you don't have to pay our wages, you know, we're doing it all for free, but we still have truck fuel and that kinda thing to go for. So as you know, you know, ninety-five percent of your grants aren't free. You gotta have the money to match that. If we don't have the money to match it, to even try, we, we can't apply for it. So that's where we're at right now. Um, we've got a truck coming in that we have to repair. We're counting on this money. We was told that we'd start getting this money in January. It's February. We still don't have a dime, let alone not taking from that.
It isn't my fault.
No, it is not hers. I talked to Jane. I know that money was not even in her hands till a week ago, and she, she can't give us money that's, you know, not there without, you know, talking to you guys. But I don't think it's right. We got budgets, too, to be promised a, you know, a certain dollar amount, and then now we're two months in without any money, and now you're trying to pull some of it back.
We run out of money, we can raise taxes, right?
Right. Next year, I think in the budgets, if you gotta go, and why is it always the volunteer farm? That's what I wanna know. This lit tax goes to more than just volunteer farming, but it's always the volunteers because it's easy to take away. And this is the first year we've been here asking for something. It's because we need it.
I just wanna say something, and, and I'll take full responsibility, because I did pledge that money.
Right.
Knowing.
Right, I get it.
That, that we had this dollar amount.
Right.
So I'm going to, I, Jane, how many is it that we need to, to do to? We can, we can do this all night.
Right.
But the rubber meets the road, unlike Gabe. The money was pledged.
And I like the percentage issue. I like that.
Are you guys counting the five that you already got as part of your fifty?
No.
No, it's.
Forty-five. It's se- them are separate. We got five.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five is what goes together.
We would need another twenty-four.
Another twenty-four thousand, too.
Because, because we budgeted.
I, I wanna get past this money pledge. We didn't pledge it. We said, based on this budget here, we're gonna do this. We didn't get this, so why do we have to get that? We didn't pledge.
It is most certainly.
No, we didn't. We set a budget.
It's in the minutes, Bob. It was a pledge.
We pledged that to them. God's arm, we're pledged, we're with their blood, we don't give a damn.
That's okay. It's all right. So like, everybody's gotta vote, so let's just, there's no sense of getting aggravated here. I, I think the biggest issue right now is, can we legally give that money?
So I'm okay if you guys pass it with, with the caveat that it can be legally correct.
Okay.
Okay, does someone wanna make a motion to pass?
I'll make it.
The twenty-four thousand?
I'll say it.
Okay. Uh, Tim, second?
Thank you.
All right. Do we wanna do a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Roll call.
Yes.
Okay, Riker, Peyton, yes?
Patterson?
Yes.
Navi?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
Bevington?
No.
Yes. Pass?
Thank you.
Pass?
Yes.
Got you, Manny. Thank you guys for your service.
Yes, thank you very much.
You don't know how much it is.
Okay, Wayman, Wayman Dale's talking this one second.
When you started talking, you were talking thirty-nine thousand deficit, but you just passed twenty-four thousand. What did I miss?
No, the thirty, it, she, if we took the money that was, that we have right now, without doing anything with general, all they would be getting would be, uh, thirty-five. So, but if we go in, well, it would actually be thirty-seven thousand, three hundred and eighty-four. So, but what we went in to keep the dollar amount that we pledged, we took it to forty-five, so we will have to, uh, take twenty-four thousand out of, to meet that pledge, to meet that agreement. So, and I do thank you for your service and everything that you do in the community. It is very important. And I was dreading this meeting. I'm not gonna lie.
We will, Steve.
I was dreading it, but it's okay, because I, we, we really respect everything that you do and, and putting your lives on the line, so.
You guys have heard about what they're doing to the state?
Well, I didn't even bring that up.
I'm just saying, you guys have heard about that, right?
We got a house bill coming down, it's a disaster working on us. We've got OSHA coming down, working on us. I mean, it's, it's hitting us right across, so it's not good. So we'll hopefully deal with them when they come down with the pot.
Well, thank you.
I think the house bill affects you guys somewhat, too.
The house bill, SB one, affects county drastic.
Ever.
Like a million dollars.
Yeah.
For a first year, and then it gets worse.
I'd encourage everyone to talk to your reps in the state, and I've talked with ours, uh, on Friday, and I don't think they're supportive of it, but I think we need to make sure everybody gets.
Tell your family, and the family, everybody, call.
We've made sure we're all ready and stay on top of it.
Because it does make a difference if people reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, new business, um, oh, no, no, we're still in no business. Courthouse security. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'll give everybody a minute to clear out the sleeve. Jeff, would you mind?
Take care of you.
I'll just, so, um, everybody have that up on their screen.
Just the space bar.
Space bar, gotcha. So, um, after meeting, meeting with Sharon, Zach, Michael from IT, and Josh, I, I put together a little PowerPoint, it's only ten slides long, um, that kinda highlights things that we would like to see, uh, for safety, for the courthouse. If you could go to the next slide, you can actually skip it, too. Uh, this is a two-year, um, scalable plan, so over twenty-twenty-five and twenty-twenty-six. What we're looking at is installing, uh, the metal detector that we already have, so there will be no cost for purchasing that. We also have, uh, magnetic, uh, wands that came with it, as well, the sheriff's department has those. Uh, installing the security station and door access system to the courthouse. Basically, what we would need is just, um, the desk, um, a couple of chairs, uh, some people barriers, one set of lockers which would allow people to lock, if they carried something in the courthouse that they couldn't take into a courtroom, they could lock it, take the key with them on their way out, they could, um, grab their stuff and just put the key back in. Um, I do wanna caveat, this does not, anything in this, uh, PowerPoint doesn't include the sheriff's department's security guys. So I didn't include those costs in there, because that's something you guys will have to work out with, with Zach. But between the conversations I had, um, with IT maintenance, sheriff, we can get, um, this done and set up, and we could actually get it done rather quickly. We have a lot of this stuff, um, but for less than eleven-five, uh, this year. And that will get us key fob access, um, to all the doors, make one main entrance, the north entrance right here, blocking all the other exterior doors. Office furniture equipment, less than a thousand dollars, it's nine hundred and eleven. IT equipment, that's for the computer, the monitors, uh, for the security guards. And then, um, getting everything installed and up and operational. For twenty-twenty-six, um, we'd like to get a key fob access from the sheriff's department, um, for the elevator, for the, the back door. So, um, our visitors, people who come into the courthouse, can't just go in there. They have to have restricted access to get into the backside of the elevator. After talking with Hillfire, um, these are quotes that, that we've received on these things, um, the elevator two thousand, and on this door that goes to the stairways, that's right out here, um, you can't see through it. So when the sheriff's department is bringing prisoners over, we can't see who's in the hallway, and they can't see us. Um, so we're, we're asking to put two glass panels in that door. Both can be done for, for less than five hundred dollars. I think there were like a hundred and fifty-some dollars apiece for the panels.
Wait, you just get one quote?
So I, I actually have another quote from Verkata. They're outrageous, uh, and most, uh, places are, but Hillfire is one of our vendors that do, does our work now. And, and I don't think we're gonna be able to be.
We can probably get another couple quotes before we actually get ordering. This was just a quick quote, just to get a, a fair part.
Conversation started, right?
Yeah. So, um, yeah, so looking at the record storage, getting camera system for that, uh, getting the IT needs met there. What Hillfire quoted us was thirteen thousand for it. And then, uh, next year, starting to replace the panic buttons. Uh, I think there's some right in front of you all, uh, somewhere on the, the desk. Those are wore out. They've had the batteries replaced in them a million times. I'm holding the most of them together with Scott's tape, uh, to keep them together. And those are a hundred dollars apiece. So I'd like to, if we, we go this, this route, I would like to, um, replace only ten of those. I, I don't think we need them at, at every location if we have security, so. Two-year total, we're looking at less than, uh, twenty-eight thousand, twenty-seven, six seventy-nine, uh, with the numbers that I have. Go on to the, the next one. Um, this is what it would look like. Um, so this would be our public interest. This is an explosive view of this entrance right out here. Uh, we'd have those barriers, making people come in one door. All exits will be open to everybody. Everybody can leave whatever door they're closest to. We can't lock those down from the inside going out, because it's a fire, it's a building code violation. We have to have those open and accessible for people to leave. But having everybody filter in through one main entrance, uh, just having security guards there and a metal detector there will deter a lot of negative actors trying to do something that they shouldn't. So having that security station and everything there, this is just what, what it would look like. If you could go on to the next slide. So, um, the lockers, I'd like to put right outside between the two entry doors, uh, there, so people can leave their, their items there. If somebody accidentally carries a weapon in, you know, and they don't wanna get in trouble, they could lock it in there. That way, security knows where it's at, and things are secure that way. All the, all the, you know, the quotes that I got for everything, uh, was all basically through Amazon. Uh, they're really the cheapest to get this kind of equipment and stuff, outside of the IT needs and things like that. So the furniture, you know, none of it's really expensive. But it, it looks nice. Uh, I've got some pictures, I'll show you here in a little bit. I've highlighted on the, the PowerPoint, the doors, the RFID access, um, what we'd like to, to accomplish, um, there. If you could go to the next slide. So this is the door right out here to the stairwell that I was talking about. Um, that six-by-thirty glass pane, I'd like to have two of those, uh, put into that doorway. This is our actual door, too, so.
That's regular glass?
Yeah, it's see-through, so we can know who's on each side.
Someone could bust it, right?
Well, we'll, we'll look at, I think it's a safety glass. It's people stopping, just walking in the door, right one side to the other.
I noticed, I didn't see a conveyor belt. Do we have a conveyor belt? And we talked about that last time.
We don't, um, but I, I've got more news on that, uh, and I'll get into that here in just a second, if you'll give me that time. All right, if you could go one, please. So this is our second floor, and these are our courtrooms. Uh, there's really not a lot we need to do here, other than to make sure that the cameras we have are getting a good view of the courthouse, or the courtrooms. There's some blind spots right now, but, but working with Michael and, and Hillfire, who does our cameras, we can get something a little bit better there, um, to get a better, broader view.
Do we have cameras in every office holder's place in the building?
We have a lot of cameras around, but they're not in every office.
Pardon, Mike?
Not in every office, no.
How many are back in?
The, there are only two offices that should have cameras that don't at the moment, that's the.
Uh, let's, hey, you guys can discuss it, I just would advise you not to.
Yeah.
Off, off camera, if you wanna talk about that.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say that, that per the handbook that don't have them, but other than that, per the camera policy in the handbook, there's, there was never stated, stated that every campus offices have cameras. Um, the, the policy per the handbook was stated that it was certain criteria, basically what's a, um, handle certain, um, things, so. There's only one, uh, two offices right now that have that, that don't have cameras.
You know, we have one of the safest courthouses in Indiana right now. It was built new, it was built for safety, and we don't really need to be discussing what the issues are here, because if anyone comes in there to hurt anybody, you've got two minutes left to live, and that's gonna be it. We can pick your body up out in the parking lot. And I don't think we need to know what offices have, what, what, what. And we shouldn't, don't need to be disarming everybody, because we, we sit in this council for five years, and the guy had a thirty-eight strapped to his ankle, and we felt perfectly safe.
All right, the, this is the basement floor here, um, looking at where the health department is, locking that with RFID access, as well as the back door for the sheriff's department used to move prisoners through. Uh, and if we can go to the next slide, and I'm available if you have questions on this. This is kinda the timeline. Um, most everything that we do, and after I talked to Josh, um, this morning about this, other than getting the electrical line, if we have to go up to two forty instead of one-ten, he said that could be done really quickly. So we could actually implement all of this within a week, week and a half at max, um, trying to get everything, once everything comes in. That would be the, the, the equipment, you know, the, the desk, the, the security station, um, and, and then getting, uh, when I talked to Zach, and he's here, and he, he can attest, he said, you know, if we implement this and we get moved forward, he can have. this and we get moved forward, he can have security here immediately, once we get a station set up, so. Going on, if you'll go to the next slide, please. This is kind of the furniture that I'm looking at, I want to keep it nice looking out here, it's our courthouse, we don't, but it's not expensive furniture. The reception desk, it gives it a nice entrance when people come in, something, somewhere the security guards can sit and monitor, camera feeds, things like that. There's the storage locker again, none of this is outrageous. I did put into this $2,000 for IT needs, but Michael can better direct that, and if it's a lower cost, or he has that control over that portion of the budget, what he needs to do to make this happen. And then putting door signs, restricted access signs out on the exterior of the building, I tried to pick some that looked nice and wasn't going to be an eyesore, to put on each of the exterior doors, and some, that six-pack of trays, it's for people, if they empty their pockets out before they go through the metal detector, they can put it in the basket. Now, that's what the furniture looks like, I'm amenable to changing any of that if we have better, or we have this type of equipment somewhere else. This is not set in stone, it's a scalable modular project that you guys can adjust as you see fit. And I think, is there one more slide?
Yep.
That was it on the slides. I do have a copy of the budget, kind of wrote down in Excel, if you guys want that. But, you know, I'm not here trying to sway you one way or the other, you guys know we need security in a courthouse, it's on you and the Commissioners to make those decisions, I'm just providing you a snapshot in time of what we can do.
And a conveyor, just maybe use the baskets on the table?
So now that you, thank you for bringing that back up. So I did do some research on those, actually, Zach tried to get ahold of the sheriff in Wayne County, I found a X-ray machine that comes with the conveyor belt for roughly, there's two options, there's a good option, and there's a better option, and the quote I got on them, it's the same makers that made our metal detector, Safe Eagle, 6,550 for the good option, and for the better option, 7,590, so.
And that includes like the screen, monitor, everything?
So I, since our last meeting, and I want to, because since our last meeting, I've, since I go to a lot of courthouses, I've talked to some security guys, and they've said, quite frankly, it would be disastrous to try to do without that, like going through people's purses, and it'd just be, it would be ridiculous, non-functional, so you definitely want to go that route.
And this is the same company that made our metal detectors, so. So we are saving costs by already having that, getting it installed, it could be a rather quick turnaround, depending on how fast we can get in, and then once we schedule with a vendor to do the RFID for the door access, whatever their schedule looks like getting it completed. Any other questions?
He gave you the cheap version, he gave you the expensive version?
Yep.
We're gonna have to have two people, it'd be jail officers, so we'd have to add two jail officers, make them special deputies, they carry a gun, so salary, you need two of them, $43,000 apiece. She can tell you, the benefits, I guess, it's probably another 15, $20,000. Overtime, somebody asked about overtime, if we covered every shift that somebody took off, we're probably looking around $4,000, that's somebody with two weeks vacation, so that would probably be, we're already paying a lot of overtime over there anyway, so $4,000 for that. And then equipment, I gotta put a vest on them, I gotta give them a gun, a uniform, so we're looking at about $3,500 for that.
Are you talking 100 per, for 200,000, for two people, or 100 for two people?
100 for two.
About 100 for two. That's a little less than 100,000, I think, when you break it down.
Might be a little bit more.
Probably closer to 130, 140.
Yeah. Oh, with the benefit, with the benefits, yeah. I reached out, somebody asked about Wayne County, I reached out to the sheriff, he was supposed to talk to the Commissioners, because they're getting new stuff, he was gonna talk to the Commissioners, and he hasn't reached back out to me, so I'm just waiting to hear back from him. Yeah, they got a conveyor belt, and that's all I asked him, I said, if you're willing to give that up, Fayette County will take it, just to get us started, to see how it's gonna work out.
How old is it?
Wayne County has a lot of money, so probably three or four years old, I would assume, it's probably, they're getting rid of it, so I would assume Fayette County would take it for free if they give it to us, but he hasn't reached back out to me, I asked a week ago, two weeks ago, I want to talk to him.
I'll probably see a Commissioner next week, a Wayne County Commissioner next week, I'll ask him.
Well, you guys are considering this too, I might bring up, we had an incident Friday in the courthouse, and while the Sheriff's Department guys did fantastic, they were here as fast as they could, the situation went on for more than a couple minutes before help could get here, so I'm not going to talk about it, I don't want to expose any security issues, but there was an issue here Friday.
Young man got taken to jail because he was disorderly over here, so he was taken to jail, it did take us a couple minutes to get here, but when we got here, there was about six of us, and it was handled, but again, things do happen here. God, thank God, we haven't had a really bad situation, but it's just a matter of time.
But there was a breakdown in the system.
What's that?
That caused that problem.
No, he came over here and was angry because he didn't get the answer he wanted, so he started-
But it took you longer because of the breakdown of the system that normally lets you know what's going on, isn't it?
As far as, as far as the panic button, or, I don't know, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
I think they called 911, I don't know if they hit the panic button.
Yeah, they did, and they might have answered.
Oh, really?
They didn't hit the panic.
See, I don't think they hit it.
I get those calls if they do, they come straight to my office through a radio.
Yeah, I don't think they did, and if they did, it didn't work, so I, that's why we need some new panic buttons also, that was on, this is one of the slides. But again, a lot of people say we haven't had a lot of incidents here, why do we need security, but we haven't had a school shooter either, but we got security at all the schools, so better safe than sorry, in my opinion. But again, you guys got to come up with the money, I mean, you were just arguing over $30,000, so coming up with a couple hundred thousand dollars is going to be, it's going to be tricky, and that's up to you guys. We'll do it, if you want us to, we'll do it, and if you don't want us to, we'll still come over whenever we're called, that's what we're here for.
Is there any way that the Sheriff's Department can help offset that cost for deputies?
As far as equipment, we could probably offset that cost, but salary, no.
No, I mean, they're like, maybe sending deputies over here, do you have enough? You said you had a full-
I got a full jail staff, but that's still, we still don't have enough jail staff, I got, I got bare minimum jail staff right now. Well, right now, we're doing good, because Women's Center hasn't opened, but as soon as I send the women over there, and we're bare minimum again, minimum. Detectives, me, we can run over sometimes, if we're there.
Wade said he could too, he said he was willing to help out.
I was gonna ask Wade, is there a foundation grant cycle coming up you can ask?
So there's actually a court reform grant that provides funding for security equipment, things like that, however, it's already passed this year, I have reached out to them, asked them to send me an application for next year, I haven't heard back from them yet, but I did reach out, there's no guarantee, and all of those are federal funds, and I've paid attention here lately to the new, FEMA sent me a copy of the restraining order they're filing against our current president to stop funding through a lot of programs, so I think FEMA's gonna pull back on a lot of their funding, I'm sure the court system will do the same, until they get their politics worked out at the federal level, so I would not hold my breath on grant monies.
The two hospitals, McConnell Hyde and Reed, have grant cycles too.
They do, yes, I look at a ton of different sites for grants, all the time, and I'm always looking, so, but I'm happy to explore other, if you guys know something for a grant that I don't.
Again, grants will pay for all the equipment, which isn't really the expensive part, it's the staff, that's where the money's at, so, I wish we had a grant that would pay for that, but we don't. Any other questions?
Michael, did you have anything you wanted to say?
No, Wade can pretty much cover everything, the computers and the monitors are pretty much the cheap part of the whole thing, it's the, 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 the people and the, the door access and all that stuff is the expensive stuff, so.
Did you ever get the information, Michael's asking it up, ours leasing equipment?
The leasing for us doesn't really help, because we're building, it's just a, for businesses, when they lease it, it shifts it from a capital expense to a, basically a rental, so it just changes where it goes to, from a, a capital expense to an operating expense, but then you've got your cost for your item, plus your interest here, that kind of thing, spreads it out, costs. It changes where it goes in your books, but for government, it just, it's capital expense or capital expense, so it doesn't change anything for us. So you spread out your payments, but, and then you add an interest payment or a processing payment on top of it, so it makes it advantageous for us.
I'd like to know what the numbers are.
I can give them for you, but it's not gonna change anything.
I appreciate it, I'd like to look at it.
I'll get some for you.
Okay. Now we're gonna move on to new business, which is the deputy coroner pay. Kathy had retch out to me about Mr. Richardson has not passed his coroner's test yet, it's not until February 17th, and she felt like that the pay that he was getting, that she should be entitled to that, since she has mainly done most of the work and the paperwork and things like that. So I don't know what that amount would be, I think it would be for like October, what did we say, was it October, November, December that she was asking for, I'd have to look on here and see. Yeah, so it'd be, do you know what that amount is? Okay, it is-
He takes his test in February, correct?
February 17th, yes, and she has been acting, I guess you'd say coroner, since he came into office, and that would be October, November, and December.
And two months for this year, correct?
Well, he's not, he's not getting paid right now, Jane can explain that.
He will be paid though, in a lump sum, if he passes his exam, so there's no money sitting there, you'll have to do an additional appropriation, if you, if you want to do that, but like last year, we paid, we had to pay both of them, because it's the elected coroner, he's getting his pay, but we did an appropriation and also paid her for May, June, July, May, June, July, August, and September, so like we paid her for five months.
So we already done it before, right? Because I was thinking we had this competition before.
Yeah, we did it, we did it last year.
And do we know that Mr. Richardson is, is going to take that test on February 17th?
It's the 9th, it's not the 1st.
No.
I know, I've got the agenda, it's the 9th.
Okay.
It's just Sunday, yes, and it is, that is the 9th.
Okay, so he is-
I don't know that he's gonna do it, I've got her permit.
Okay, so we don't know, this could be an ongoing situation.
My communications have all been through the Coroner's Association, and they have advised us via letter, I know Dale Strong has copied on those too, as President, as Commissioners, that he has that, until that date to, it's like actually a seminar that begins on Wednesday, but he's already had some of the modules, so Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday, the final thing is the exam. If he passes the exam, then they will notify us that he's passed that exam, and we will pay him retroactive to January 1st, when I started withholding his pay. I don't know what happens if he doesn't, they've never said, I assume he doesn't get that money going back to January 1st, and then he won't be able to be coroner, we'd have to call somebody else in.
Why did he take it late?
Why did it?
In the original, in September, when he had the first training, I, my understanding is he had a family emergency and had to leave the training, so he did not take the exam at that time.
And there's been no other opportunity since then?
No.
Okay, so this was the next time?
Yeah.
Okay. So how much are we talking?
About $10,000.
How much? Well, we don't have the additional appropriation before us tonight. Can, I mean, Jeff, can we take action on something that we haven't, on additional appropriation that we haven't really discussed, or haven't put forward on?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
Yeah, it's not been advertised, so we have to advertise it for the next-
Yeah, for the next meeting, we can always put it out there, or we can always put it on the agenda and let it be an up or down vote on it.
No, she has been receiving some pay, like since, like she turns in so much per claim for, for other claims that she does, so she has been getting some money, so you guys would have to give me some guidance on whether you want to subtract that from whatever you would be giving her.
Right, because she's been paid as a deputy coroner, not the coroner.
Not the coroner, right.
And then will we have to go back and do this again for January, February, since she's acted that, or January?
If you guys wanted me to, I could advertise for, for all the weeks, I think, do we wait until Eddie, well, we would know by the time we meet next, if he's past his name or not.
Yeah, because if it's the 9th, that would be this coming week.
Yeah, so I could, I could do an additional appropriation, I can figure the dollar amounts, do an additional appropriation for the March meeting, and then discuss it again.
Actually, that's Sunday, the 9th, so that would be when he's taking his test, this Sunday.
Maybe we should also have orders in place for this type of situation.
It's $10,000 difference just for those two months?
No, for all five.
Okay, okay, that's where I was going.
Yeah, no, sorry. Like, like before she was getting, it was $1,090 every two weeks, so I'm just guessing 2,000 a month, five months, I'll do the actual amount and get the real.
But that's, that's, okay, that makes sense.
So then that'd be on a appropriation for March, that we'll do that at the board meeting, All right, are there any patron concerns from the audience?
Yes.
It ain't got anything to do with your money or anything like that?
Come up to the podium.
Yeah, come up to the podium, please.
You guys have the same problem I got over here, I can't hear a thing over here. Is there any way you can turn up your volume a little?
I'm not in that system.
Oh, that's not true.
You don't have a PA system right now.
This, this, these are for the cameras, they don't, they don't amplify it.
I just wondered, I know I was here last fall a couple times, you can hear some of you, but I know Kay I can't hear, but she speaks softly anyway, so, I just wondered, that's all I needed.
It's always been, we've always had an issue, just the room is laid out kind of funny, and we've always had this issue.
Okay.
You're not the first one to say it.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the audience?
Can we say something and not go on camera? Is that possible or not? Well, okay, but I won't say a lot of what I want to say.
There's only about 1.5 million viewers tonight.
Yeah, there's not that many viewers, so.
I'll make sure we are close enough.
And what I do want to say is, I do, I've been with CASA for almost 14 years now, and I see a lot of cases, so I don't want to go into detail, but I think security- I see a lot of cases. So I don't want to go into detail. But I think security at the courthouse is a must. And I'm, I would love to see that. There's been times where I thought about leaving, because there's not enough security. I've seen a lot of cases that it make your skin crawl, you know? And so I would love to see security here. I have been to many of the surrounding courthouses, and I feel so good when I walk in there, because we're not even allowed to bring our cell phones in. Locker's right there. If you do, you have to put them up. And you feel safe. And I'm sure everybody that's employed there feels a lot safer as well. So I, the layout is just beautiful. I mean, you guys did a really good job with that. And I kind of feel safe when I'm here, when the prisoners are here, which is kind of odd to say, but I know that there, there's security. So when they're not here, is when I don't feel safe. And I think that is really important for all the employees here, and volunteers, and even like foster parents who come in on cases. I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of people at risk that you guys just don't really maybe think about, but it is really important to have security here. That's what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
I'm gonna talk about the security, too. I think you guys should just ask the employees what they think about it. Being an employee here for six years, I would like it.
Did you hear an employee here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good.
So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
We actually enjoy it when employees come here and voice their opinion. We encourage it.
Yeah, I think it, like I said, if people don't come, then maybe send out an email across all of us, and hopefully they'll get some responses.
Do you ladies want to say anything?
I'm, I'm with Casey. I, I work here in Superior Court also, and I, I mean, I would feel better, just with some of the, I've only been here since September, and just with some of the situations that we've had, like some of the threats and stuff. It's unnerving. I mean, even though some of us have our other security with us, it's, you know, it would just be better to have somebody who's professionally trained, closer.
Have any of you been in the courtrooms and seen any action or anything? You guys, maybe you guys should, if you haven't. I mean, there's a lot of angry people. I've been up there for a hearing myself, and the death stare I got from an inmate, you know, it, there's, these courtrooms, and not just the courtrooms, but everybody, there's, there's a lot of angry people that come in this building.
Yeah. I agree.
You were scared of the inmates?
Um, yeah.
They were shackles.
Yes, he was in shackles. But that's still the death stare that he gave me, knowing who I am, and when he gets out, was the, you know, I mean, yeah, I didn't, I mean, I felt safe in there, because there was a security cop with me. But those death stares are, I mean, they're not fun.
I get those stares at Walmart.
Well, then, you know.
Not the same.
Safety is very...
Safety is very...
And we've been talking about this.
So is this gonna get tabled then, for another month now, then, with no security? Or are you not voting on this today, or what, to put it in?
We're not voting tonight on it.
Okay.
We can't vote tonight. But we, it's definitely our radar. It's, it's of the utmost importance. So I wish we could, but I'm only one member.
Yeah, we've been talking about it. It's not, it's not a death subject, but like, we just have these sort of things in a row.
Right. Well, I know last month that they got tabled, and so, you know.
Yeah. We were working on getting the, all the pricing, and getting everything together so we can.
Tonight was just more about giving a report about what was found.
Yeah. Thank you for coming and giving your opinions. We appreciate that, for sure, for sure. Or all of you in the judges' chambers?
I am not.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for coming. Any other comments? So commissioners, what can you do to help us to see this through?
I mean, honestly, I got mixed emotions on it, but I can see putting it in. But I feel like if we put it in, there'll only be one door to come in for employees, probably everybody, to go through the same door.
One of those, what most courthouses do.
Pardon me?
That's what most courthouses do.
I know a few other ones that let the employees have key fobs and go in one of the doors.
But Wade's proposed one.
Or I'm sure.
Well, that's for the sheriff's department, judges, prosecutor, like attorney.
Screening.
Especially the money you paid to build this courthouse.
It won't be for Jane, it won't be for...
I'd like to show Charlie.
I don't know. Ask Zach.
What's that?
The key fobs. Who, are they for the employees, or are they for?
Wade, the key fobs were for employees. That was just an option.
It's an RFID access. So if the employees have those, and can come in any door, we know who's coming in and out of the courthouse, what time they're coming in and out of the courthouse.
And it's that person specific. And then if that person, it were to be, if that person leaves, then you can eliminate that person. We don't have to change our...
Right, yeah. Without having to go through the whole key thing, and losing keys, and somebody having keys out there. We can stop it right then and there.
So, yes.
And you can also control what time those people are gonna come in.
So in your plan, courthouse employees all come through the main entrance? They're not coming through all the other doors?
No, that Mike, my plan would give our employees, if we trust them enough to hire them, I think we should give trust enough to come in any door that they park next to. So the key fobs are not expensive. I think when Mike checked on it, it was about less than $100 for over 100, or something like that.
That's not less than $100.
What that does is allow us to, on computer, to know who's coming in, that's with the camera system, when they're coming in. And it's not hindering our employees. So now, that's up to you guys. I'm just providing you information, that what you guys do.
What are you using?
It's up to you.
Have you ever had pissed off a boy?
Do what?
Have you ever had pissed off a boy?
Many times. Yeah.
All right. So would someone like to make a motion to, so we're gonna resume this, this conversation, and hopefully have more dollar amounts, more ideas, maybe some grants we've looked at. We're, we're using everything that we can to find a way to make this happen. So we're trying to be very creative. So, does someone making a, one making a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn.
Okay, second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't move.